Well, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the City of Lake Forest Park City Council Work Session for October twelfth, twenty twenty-three to order. Uh, Director motion for adoption of the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded all of the favorably seven five seven nine.
Hi.
Any news? Guys, have it. Thank you, everybody. And tonight we have council discussion topics are deliberations and recommendations for the mayor's proposed mid-by budget adjustment between twenty-three, twenty-two and four. Director.
Okay, I will go ahead and take it. First, I will, um. So, the, one of the main items tonight is that we want to make sure that any questions um that anybody's having uh questions or, you know, that they um are asked, so if we cannot answer them tonight, they do get answered prior to us moving forward. But with that, I will walk into going over the six-year financial forecast, and I'm pretty much gonna do a a brief, brief uh overview of this. Um, and it's all been sent uh to you via email, so you have it electronically in addition to the physical copy. And I think, uh, Pat, did you, you've attached it to the packet, right? Thank you, just in case you have people doing that they can follow along. So first, uh, the, the graph. Um, so with the changes that were made, um, this year with the uh investment strategy that was adopted, in addition to last year during the budget season, um, some of the new revenues that were put in uh in place definitely um have, you can see on the graph, if you compare this year's uh mid-biennial six-year forecast graph to last year's. Um, we were crossing, um, we were crossing at the twenty-seven, twenty-eight year down below the target sixteen percent. And now we are, we are not through using the forecast. Uh, the forecast is extremely detailed, um, and I'm not expecting to go through each line item tonight. I just want to walk through each column and say that we have made some changes, so then hopefully it's very, very easy to follow. It should look very uh similar except for right after the adopted, the there's the description on the left, and then the second column in is the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four adopted budget. Third column in is the new column that's been added for the twenty-three, twenty-four mid-biennial proposed budget. So that in addition to your, the mid-biennial budget adjustments with the schedule of uh adjustments. Yep, the schedule of adjustments that was included in the mid-biennial, that those numbers will tie directly to that column to make it incredibly transparent. Um, and they're on the left side, right by the adopted budget, because there's the column right next to it for the one-time expenditures that are, are one-time costs, so they don't really apply necessarily any ongoing forecast and and really should appropriately be removed. And so, uh, and in addition for transparency, anything that was changed, anything that was changed is also highlighted in yellow. Um, so to make it that you can very easily and quickly run through oh, that you can very easily and quickly run through the document and see where the changes have occurred. Uh, and through websites. And I think that really, I mean, if you'd like me to go over, um, briefly again, what we have gone over with the adjustments that we discussed at the previous meeting or at this time. Uh, are there any questions or?
Also, it's your pleasure. Would you like to go over the adjustments again, just briefly, or move right into?
High level? High level, high level, okay. So there are some one-offs, just uh like the Waspic Behavioral Health Grant, that's gonna be a direct pass-through. So you're gonna see it on the revenue and the expenditure side in the general fund. Um, back to the uh, the Blake reimbursement, uh, the state changed the laws and therefore reimbursed cities for the expenses that they incurred in order to refund uh those court hearing decisions uh reimburse defendants. So you're gonna see that actually that's on the revenue and the expenditure side. Um, the sewer and surface water utility tax, that was only included in the original budget for one year. And now that we have seen that uh revenue start to come in, uh, we did that, um, diligent, or we, we did that intentionally to just kind of monitor it and then adjust it here at the mid-five. So it's very conservative. Um, police overtime services, this is the overtime that actually on the expenditure side, it was, it was included. But the reimbursement portion on the revenue side where outside entities such as U-Dub reimburses the city, um, that revenue side was not captured uh appropriately and needs to be adjusted. The investment interest, again, I already stated how the changes that the Budget and Finance Committee made for the investment interest change, moving some of the funds into longer-term governmental bonds in addition to the increase on the liquid side of the interest rates on has definitely, as you can see, that is one of the only decisions uh revenue-wise that can, that has assisted in helping our, our, all of our funds. So, uh, and then moving down the state opioid, that uh sixteen thousand is, that was the state settlement that the city signed on to with a couple agreements. Um, and so we are receiving a portion of that settlement. Um, I think it's like over the course of a long period of time, too, so it'll be, uh, and then walking down, I'm gonna take some time just in the general fund to say it, and then you're gonna see it in a lot of other funds. The management professional in uh or what we define as MPE salaries and benefits. Um, there was a market adjustment that has analysis that has taken place, and so you're going to see that there's a range from uh in multiple funds on, on that, and then the Washington Cities WCIA is our insurance carrier, and their costs have increased significantly. And although we did include uh what we thought was an appropriate budgeted number from what was stated, in addition to an increase for twenty-twenty-four, uh, we fell short for the actual estimate that they are, they have provided it for the twenty-twenty-four cost, and so we do need to amend that to increase, um, to capture those costs. All right, and then walking down a judgment and settlement, that was what I mentioned is the pass-through. Then going to the limited term uh positions, these are the three police officer positions that during the time, um, there's some upcoming um retirements, and there's just a lot of transition in the police department. Uh, and so they, because it has been very hard to hire and retain officers, and it takes a long time to get them actually on the road that uh the chief came forward, requested this, um, and this is something that's already been brought forward to council and approved. We just need to amend the financial side. And then to go with that, there's when you hire new people, you have to increase the uniform expenses um and the Civil Service Commission, that is again tied to hiring case officers. Then the police equipment going into the rifles, that's an additional um seventy thousand. The laws changed around what uh police officers that they were no longer allowed to use personal rifles. Therefore, um, the chief came forward and requested that the council allocate funds in order for the department to purchase uh department-issued rifles, which was granted, and so now we um need to make that amendment. Uh, dispatch services, this is one that's been again brought forward to council numerous times, um, with uh the city of Boffel basically stating that they were no longer going to be providing, putting us on notice that they were no longer going to be providing dispatch services, the police department had to go out and evaluate. And then NORCOM became the selected, uh, the selected vendor or item that's dispatched to go with. Um, and but that cost is definitely different than what was budgeted, and so that needs to be adjusted. And that number is the delta of what will remain in twenty-three in addition to the twenty-twenty-four cost delta. Jail expenses, they have been trending um just, just higher than usual. Um, that comes at a couple things, uh, that we, we lost a, for our longer-term um inmates, we used to go over to Yakima County. And we lost that previously, and so jail expenses have continued because we have to be in King and Sonahomish County have continued to rise, but just recently we did find the, adopt the ILA with Sunny Side in hopes to mitigate that cost. Um, again, Teamster salary and benefits, uh, the Gil or the um Teamsters Union, um, that contract was ratified in twenty-twenty-three, and so we need to adjust um that cost, and that's in addition to, we had to go back and retro twenty-twenty-two, increase twenty-three and um twenty-four, the twenty-twenty-three and four, uh, cost of living adjustments were included in the originally adopted budget. Uh, the retro and the market adjustments were not. So this delta is the actual market adjustments that you're, that you're seeing. So again, walking down to the street fund, uh, a lot of this I've taken some extra time to explain in the general fund, so hopefully this will be a little quicker. Again, interest investment, that is definitely uh performing uh well, and we will be receiving quite a bit of additional interest from a couple of governmental bonds maturing in twenty-twenty-four, so it's a little bit higher. Uh, the MPEs, there is some additional uh some MPEs that are paid partially out of the street funds, um, the Teamsters and WCIA are insurance, there's a small portion that is paid for out of streets. Walking down to the next page, um, the transportation benefit, that is just some additional interest, again, walking down strategic opportunity. Uh, interest, capital improvement fund, interest, capital facility maintenance fund, yay, interest. And yeah. Change up a little. Okay, and then walking down to the transportation capital fund, more interest. And then engineering salaries, those are MPE salaries, um, and WCIA, there's some insurance costs there, a small portion, but still a portion. Capital facilities maintenance fund, again, additional interest, walking down to the sewer utility fund. Um, this is where you're gonna see the tie of the sewer utility tax is going to be revenue um into the sewer utility fund, you're gonna see it as an expense out of the sewer utility fund. And then you were gonna see it, another revenue into the general fund, and that's gonna be the exact same for sewer as it will be for the surface waterfront when we get there. Again, MPEs, the uh management professional uh employees, they are included on the sewer or in the sewer fund, that's their portion, Teamsters. Oh, professional services, there were some, this is, has been discussed numerous times within previous budget and finance meetings where the uh some previous twenty-twenty-two expenses were actually paid and realized in twenty-twenty-three. And so we just need to carry that budget forward to, um, because they hit in a different fiscal year from when the actual services were occurred.
I'm just gonna note, excuse me for interrupting, but when the, with all these inflationary pressures on insurance, when they're spread across the different funds, it's less onerous, it's not as painful to look at eight hundred dollars here, five thousand there as opposed to the the hundreds of thousands in the aggregate, you know, that we look at, so, yeah. Um, I'm sorry, it's even, yeah.
Well, I was gonna say, I think I actually wrote that number down, yeah.
Yeah.
The total additional, additional cost was uh fifty thousand, almost two hundred above what I actually had, had increased on the budget, so that's so that's a, that is, um, that's an expense that we don't really have an option on. We have to pay our insurance.
Thanks for that.
Um, so that's a thank you for bringing that up, because that was a good point, that I didn't actually make the previous meeting, but I had it written down.
On TV.
I did not have to do math on TV, thank you for that. So, um, in the twenty-twenty-two, that is actually professional services and repairs and maintenance. Um, same story there, WCIA insurance costs, sewer utility tax, uh, I just went over that. Um, sewer capital fund, yay, interest. And walking down to the surface water utility funds, uh, interest and the surface water utility tax, which is going to be on the revenue side coming in from the rate pairs, then it's going to be an expenditure um on the surface water fund, and then it's going to be revenue into the general fund. Uh, again, the MPE employees, this, this is the allocation that goes within the surface water fund. Um, in addition to the Steam, Teamster salaries and benefits, there were some professional service invoices. Um, a little bit of a larger amount in twenty-twenty-two that actually hit in the twenty-twenty-three's fiscal year. Uh, again, WCIA's insurance costs, and then walking down to the surface water capital interest on the revenue side, and then the uh thirty-fifth Avenue project design, that it's, that's the total cost of the entire project. Uh, on our dashboard, we will have that broken out a little bit differently, but, um, total cost is the, the five hundred and sixty thousand. Uh, then walking down to the final is the vehicle equipment replacement fund, again, interest. And that, sorry, that was a little more than a brief. But.
You did fine, very great, thank you. All its questions, this were real.
It's just a, a clarification on the thirty-fifth Avenue project, did we have any funds allocated that in the original biennial budget, or is this the full?
Great question.
Uh, or is it an adjustment, or is it an add?
This is a, this is a full adjustment, uh, it was in, then it was out, now it's back and back. But you are remembering that correctly, it was, yes, we've done in, out, and now we're bid by putting it back.
Yeah.
Quarterback.
Thank you.
All its other questions, please. Different questions regarding, I'm sorry, I'm really losing my voice tonight, questions regarding the budget in general and the aggregate, this is the time to make the, Mr. Bertoni, then maybe a question about shoreline arts?
Yeah, actually, thank you for bringing that up, uh, I didn't know the appropriate time was, but, uh, yeah, colleagues, one of the, um, yeah, realities of running a nonprofit is that costs suddenly change. And one of the costs that changed at Shoreline Arts was that Roland Geyer said it increased the uh rent on the gallery by a hundred fifty dollars, about eighteen hundred bucks a year. And it's, uh, unfortunately, uh, plenty that the, uh, our nonprofit can, will afford to pay. However, I think they do provide a great service to the city, providing our residents with an art alternative to, uh, some, some of the other best galleries that are around the area. Also, it celebrates local artists. Um, in addition, the costs for running things like Battle of the Bands and concerts in the park at Rusin Two, just incompetently with all the other kinds of movies we've seen on the, uh, on, in our city. Uh, in our city staff, and so the point being that they're asking for an adjustment in the mid-by budget to increase by five thousand dollars if possible.
Everyone bounce on, Mr. Bruce, question.
What are, what are we providing to our other community partners? I just am interested in making sure we have equity. Um, always for us.
It's a nice question.
That I was looking to that in the back to.
And to refer to staff, we, we did, we did, and, and no skin off Mr. Bertoni's, we actually did look for, trying to get these silly questions really every week, so staff could dig up the information.
That's a feature, or I guess.
Six.
Yeah, six, six, the other one.
Yeah, good for.
And it's under the community programs, which is, um, about halfway down the page. If that's helpful, uh, and then actually it's labeled beautifully, surely, I'm sure, Shoreline Parks and Rec is not it, just kidding. Um.
Of course, Parker's.
I was gonna say, it's labeled.
Very soon, okay, so there we are.
I don't really have necessarily the information, because again, they said, couldn't figure out how to do this, but the allocation for, uh, at least the Lake Forest Park Arts Council, we'll sit here, has been increased since two thousand nineteen. That, the shoreline drugs has been increased since two thousand. No, I'm sorry, I moved back. Yeah, we certainly have a discussion on mine, on that, so, yeah.
Well, broadly, if nobody else is gonna turn on, but I'm trying to, um, I, I support Mr. Kevitt's first time he's question here about increasing the number. I think they do a fantastic job, and I love that all the bands and other programs have been fun, and, um, and it's, again, if it's something that's just inadvertent, let's, let's correct it and find a way to make up the, the shortfalls of myself. I'm not sure what that exactly looks like, five thousand seems like a very modest amount. Any other thoughts we don't have to?
We haven't had any other requests from other community partners or.
Mr. Yeah, no, I don't know anything.
Uh, just a question, how they sought funds from other?
Absolutely, yeah, they're asked for the same from Shoreline, because of course jointly funded by both cities. Uh, in addition, Spire Washington, uh, it's been providing funds as well as, um, I wanna say that there's a community initiative, I think it's called Doors Open Now, um, it's also providing funds as well, so, yes, we've tapped us, then you prepare posses.
Thank you. Any other thoughts on community programs, um, in terms of funding levels? Again, we're gonna have to find the money from someplace else, because we're gonna do the same.
Where is friends with third place problems? Did I miss that? I was just checking out the boxes in my mind, and I'm, I'm familiar with everything. Else.
The good news is that time is so big, I can read this every time.
Is it under?
It might exist.
Community events services or?
Exactly, listed individually in prior. I'm sorry, Ted. I'd have to circle back, I'd have to have to double check, I'm not a hundred percent.
Cause I consider them to be a community partner, so you would see them there.
Yeah, they're good.
So I know that, so I tell myself, so I gotta be. Yeah. And so, were you saying, Mr. Mayor, that they have got the problem?
Yeah, I need this one to know, shock, pretty much every year since I've been mayor, I've been, I have.
Uh, okay.
I think you're around two thousand.
Okay, that's, that's okay, we can, you can continue on and figure that one out.
Can you say the name again that you asked?
Friends.
Yeah.
In prior budgets, it was third place commons. Yes, the, the shorthand name for it. Uh, yeah, it was fifty-seven in the nineteen-twenty budget. Maybe, maybe it's community development.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Is that in general?
No, there's a separate community event.
There's supplies.
Yeah.
Fifty-seven thousand for community development.
Yeah.
That's probably where it is.
Prior budget. We should double check, but, uh.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, it's like that could be in alignment.
This really does.
So I support this request, I'm just concerned about, I'm sorry.
No.
I was just trying to wrap up, um, uh, I support this request of just concern that we are providing equity and, um, addressing uh, any request that we've got free supplies from others, so it sounds like we have, so I support this request, I do think it is a service, and I think, I personally think it would be better to ask Roland Geyer to not to keep their. And to make us pay the difference on it, uh, yeah.
Yeah, indeed, Mr. Leebo.
So one of the things some council members, brittle brought this up, is that the thirty-fifth Street, uh, Stormwater Project is about about same amount as the deficit that we're running. If I, about half a million dollars. Uh, homeowner has signed a lease, and, um, would we be better off just monitoring it?
I would say without legal counsel, we might have to have a sidebar, it's about that, Mr. Levo, but, um, Mr. Longfoss.
I think last night we can chime in, she wasn't comfortable, just waiting to see how things went.
So it's a, it's a risk issue, so one might be, should we just monitor it?
I think part of that risk analysis I made would be, if it does have a failure, what's that increase cost? Uh, if it were in that sort of situation, so what, what is our risk dollar amount for that?
I, I would suggest this at this point, folks, just since we're, yeah, I think we should, I think we should revisit this and have individual conversation with the administration, if we need to have an executive session, that Mr. Leebo, your point is well taken.
I think that's a good point, I'm interested not only in legal risk, but also physical or geological risk, yeah.
Okay, let's put work out for something to consider if we need to have an executive session, if it's allowed or necessary, let's do that, and then we can continue discussion if not. I'm just cool.
Yeah, thanks, I have a question about the six-year forecast, uh, are we on to that, just general questions, or are we still looking at?
Please, go right ahead.
Um, so I pulled up the, the equivalent graph that you provided last year when we were doing the budget discussions. And I was hoping you could clarify something, so last year, the orange line crossed around twenty-twenty-six. And now it looks like the orange line crosses around twenty-twenty-nine, which stood news for us. But why I'm having trouble understanding is if we have increased expenses such as the salaries and hires and the dispatch center, how is our, how is the big picture more rosy despite those? Or is it all, is it mainly because of the office extra interest income that we get?
Not just, um, so there's, there's multiple factors that go into it. So when this budget is built, the number one factor that you're, you're looking at is you're dealing with projected beginning fund balances. That's honestly an estimate, a best educated guess, and now we have actions. So that's why actually for the first time last year, we decided to go back and show some history and then show, like, the, the actual chart was a little bit more, um, in detail than we've shown previously. Um, and so it, it goes both to being very mindful of the expenditures that are going out in addition to making efforts, uh, council, making changes on the revenue side um that we did with the uh utility taxes, um, in order to make that change in addition to the interest that has partially been on the, you know, due to the longer-term um diversification strategy in addition to the shorter term, that interest rates are just simply doing better. And so there's a couple of factors, um, it, it, it isn't just on the revenue side. Um, it's being mindful on the expenditure side, and then a big portion of that is if you actually look at your new, if, go to the next, the next page, the, the actual first page, so one of the biggest differences, and I'm not sure I can find it really quickly, and it's, oh, look at that, go to page, uh, forty-two of the, the, when you have the new budget, but you'll see that the projected beginning fund balance was six point six versus where we actually ended up with seven point eight. But you'll see that the projected beginning fund balance was six point six versus where we actually ended up with seven point eight. Cause that is, and that is not just because of revenues. That is a combination of everything.
Oh, I appreciate your cautious accounting and with that, and that, that is good news. I do think long term, it is something we will need to confront. You know, it's two years later, but we still as a city need to confront our structural. But I, I do appreciate your cautious accounting on that.
And I think if you're going to look at the chart, I mean, it's obvious they still revenues aren't keeping up with expenditures. That's why you see that diving block until we address that once. As obviously as you have some luck in either pulling back on expenses, adding revenues, it's been a combination of those now it's just income pushing that line further out, but it's still continuous. Let's go up enough to ourselves. Yes.
Yeah. Well, we've been as, as close as a couple of years out and now we're out. It's basically five, six years. My brother see it. Way over the horizon and not having to worry about it as, as much, you know, so.
Yeah, is it about time we see a new sort of orderly update on the forecast for the expenditures? That would be really helpful to see how we're doing. Or should we go to the one that, last one.
We just current revenues, yeah, expenditures.
Yeah.
It's not true.
Do you have that third quarter?
Not yet. We have not completed, are the September has not been completely reconciled at this time, but it's being worked on current. And it has to be reconciled before we can produce the dashboard. Is that what you're requesting?
Yes. Yeah. And when might that be?
We're hoping to have it completed this week, but.
Within next week, yeah, not this week, yeah, this week. So. Didn't quite get there.
We're hopefully suppose, hoping to have it completed this week. Therefore, you have to give us a minute to put the dashboard together there. And then we would have it to you next week.
Uh, the other is, I could look these up. Could you provide a spreadsheet of the values that come with this?
Yeah, absolutely.
Be possible.
Yes. Very helpful. So, cause we're.
Sort of jumping back to the, the conversation about the community services. I think kind of looking at our actual budgets and of, we've held somewhat steady, but I know we put additional funds in through the care that not our that wouldn't necessarily be reflected in the original budgets. I, I would kind of like to know like what our total has been that they've gotten over the last few years.
Oh, because.
Difficult on the community partners.
Yeah, yeah, because we did, we did boost those during the pandemic and I, I just kind of want to get a sense of as those funds have trickled out and now we're back to our kind of our base allotment. I just want to know where we're at. Not saying it's worth good or bad, I just need to kind of see that number. Yeah. And I guess it, it sounds like we've had one request that we didn't put out a call to our partners to see if they had any needs. Correct. We were just seeing if they.
No, I mean, we, we did that during the actual.
Budget. Yeah.
For the midlife.
We generally. We didn't reach out. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, oh, sorry. That's what I was gonna just say. Historically, if, if there's adjustments that normally need to be made. We normally don't, the, the mid biennial budget adjustment, which this one's unique. Normally we, we aren't adjusting certain things that we are adjusting here. Normally it's just a true up. And this one is, is just, just a little bit different because times have not been exactly normal. Yes, I'm not sure exactly how to properly say that, but with the impacts of COVID and the costs and we're playing a little bit of catch up due to contracts being ratified that were not ratified until this year. So there were some things out of our control that we're now bringing forward.
And on points of customer rentals comments or question, we have in the past, and I can remember the specifics, we have had community partners come to us, judicial ask or under specific kinds of situations where we have, they made an adjustment where we have. Yeah. So as opposed to sort of a general tall to say, hey, you know, we moved down on a buying basis since we were.
Kind of what I remember. Appreciate that. That's how they use care.
Right, right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Before that, we weren't funding that space.
I just want to check to make sure I'm reading this correctly. So when I look at the six year forecast and I'm on page three. So you very conveniently highlighted those that are different. So just as an example. Uh, the first two are utility tax, sewer need to with tax surface water. So they show up as a revenue. And what you've done there is in succeeding, you re baseline. So the following by Indians reflect that increased value.
Correct.
So then when you go down to the ones in the middle, which are the brass behavioral health grants, motion state AOC. You've treated those as a one time and therefore don't enter into the six year forecast.
That is true.
So you added the revenue and then took it back up.
Correct.
Which is, I get that.
This one.
Yeah. Okay. But then when you go down to the state opioid settlement. You've only backed out of partial saying, we will get that amount of money going forward at about four thousand. So it establishes in the baseline.
Correct.
So the one below it, the investment interest at four thirty three, five hundred. You backed out a hundred and fifty to represent that going forward in the future, you anticipate less interest than what you're getting now.
And cautious.
Therefore, you've established baseline, not at twenty thousand or four thirty three, but rather than what you believe to be a more risk realistic value than we're receiving a bonus for this. So you reduced by every fifty to reflect a more consistent baseline going forward. So in essence, you bumped up from twenty thousand to three hundred and three as the new base.
Correct. And I, I'm just gonna take a minute to explain that.
No, I get it.
Because I do not, I want to be very, very cautious to state our revenues and overstate them. Interest is, there's a portion of the ten million dollars that we have invested that I can tell you the exact amount of money that will hit the bank. Each year I can tell you that, but there's a portion of our funds that I cannot. And so therefore I have to, I would never want to overstate on the revenue side. I would rather be more cautious and have the conversation in the future. Whether it's in twenty seven or twenty eight, that interest continues to perform at a very high level. And guess what? We get to amend it up, but we didn't anticipate that the way that interest rates are today will be and, and base ongoing expenditures off of a, a cost. And if that hundred and fifty or if that interest ends up that we need to adjust it, we will continue to monitor, monitor this on an annual basis and do the adjustment. For the twenty three, twenty four number that's in there that exists, that's conservative. I'm just gonna tell state that. And a big portion of that is that there will be two bonds that will mature in the twenty twenty four year that have a higher interest. And so we are going to, that, that is very conservative, but there is a larger amount that will hit the bank as far as interest goes in fiscal year twenty twenty four. That I'm certain of. You can't, it has to, it, it is, it just is. So end story. That being stated. I can't, I can't one hundred percent predict the, the variable of what isn't invested in the government agency lot. So therefore I'm cautious.
Cause we're.
I just want to say, to me, I feel, given our budget situation, very glad that we have pursued our conservative investment strategy. I'm also glad that you estimate that conservatively and I appreciate council member Lebo's summary because it's a very concise way of understanding the numbers of the columns. So even though if I had sat and stared at this for a while, I would have ended up in the same place probably is. His summary was just spot on. So I appreciate all three of those.
I agree.
That's brutal.
I was just thinking about racer crisis center. And I found racer under the community programs. But I can't remember where the crisis center venture would be under. And is that, are we, are we making an expenditure? Yeah.
They're, they're funded fully.
They are, they did get, so we don't have to.
Yeah, we have no, no.
Wanted to make sure.
And they're just embraced.
Just the racers. Racer. Okay. Thank you. I just couldn't remember where we ended up. Yay. No expenditure like that.
There's other, other questions. We have about five minutes left to discuss this. I think that the investment question is a, it was a really important one. We're seeing we're not gonna be able to enjoy the fruits of this labor, the staff's hard work on this for definitely, but it, the short. Since we're not borrowing money, we're doing well. And hopefully we don't have to borrow money for anything. It's not for capital projects, et cetera.
Yeah.
I apologize to the council and to the city. We should have done that when we wanted to four years ago and fortunately we can't risk ourselves. Or if you go and moving forward, the city, they're really interesting. They are, they have some really smart people that. We, we believe that I will say that we, you really had it. You know, but taking about this quite a while, you know, it's very much.
Well, and, and thank you, Mr. Merit. I'd like to give staff a lot of credit as well, because they, they did the light work on this and convinced us in the background. And so thank you. Let's see it. And so. This week.
Not to look for a golden goose egg, but. When we talk about interest investment, we have, we had sort of a criteria for how much we would willing to do that. Could you remind us of what that was reflected about? So for example, you invested ten million dollars. How did that relate to what our range was or how much we would invest in alternative interest bearing? Because the question is, should we invest more?
It was a little over ten.
Yeah.
It was not to exceed like ten point four or something. It was a, it, there was a variance in there just slightly. But that, that was just, that was less than fifty percent of our actual cash flow. And so we felt that that was the appropriate amount as a group to invest. That was very safe and it has, and, and we, we can circle back and report again. It has been laddered and we actually, that's part of why why September's, I'll just be honest, is taking a little longer because they have matured. And so we took that two million dollar investment and then broke it into to one million dollar investments with two different maturity dates to continue the laddering structure. Um, and, but we can give a full detailed breakdown of what that looks like at the next budget. We will get that out.
Thank you. Mr. To Mr. Lebo's point, I believe the range that we discussed was up, we settled at ten. Give, give or take depending on what the bond structure looked like. He announced the upper echelon, upper threshold was twelve. By if I'm not mistaken, something like that. And to your point, I, there is the question, we had had a, a conversation about potentially coming back after a period of time to revisit whether we needed to lower the amounts or to, you know, roll things into add a little bit of additional depending on our propensity for tolerating risk.
Yeah, jumping up on customer relief was point. So if it turns out that our general fund is actually like one to two million dollars more than anticipated. Might that mean we have one to two million dollars that we could be more willing to invest? I'd be willing to consider we want to increase the amount that we have based on higher general revenue.
Yeah, and I call it being a percentage. Our policy as, for policymakers, we provided you a percentage not to exceed for these these bonds. And so as, as our amount of available investable mon- money goes up, then the total amount can go up because it's where it types that percentage. So yeah, I, I agree with my colleague. I'd like to know where we're at at this point.
Yep.
And, and where we could be if we maxed out the policy and so we can have a discussion on that. So in the future.
Oh.
No.
Uh, it is tied to an actual, the investment portion in the comprehensive financial policy. And it does specifically state, I wanted to look because I, I was thinking that it was fifty percent. It's max sixty, target fifty. So it is, it is clearly stated in there and that the finance director is the, the delegation of authority, but the investment objective and the, the strategy has to be approved by the budget and finance committee. I cannot do and, and then my backup is the city administrator. So that's all stated within the policy that was adopted. So that's the guidelines of what's being followed.
And just to be clear, we all recognize that we're in a, in a unprecedented time of high yields and volatility is going to be bearing down on us here in a couple of years. And my, my tolerance for risk is, is it wanes very quickly after about eighteen or twenty four months in terms of additional investments that are not shorter term in terms of some of these questions. So just, just for food for thought, we, we do need to bring this back. It's a more than a conversation for us to have before the.
Right. Part of this is really a liquidity issue. I mean, if you're making money off interest, it's just a question of how liquid that.
Exactly.
And I think it's, I, I just want to remind, state this, you need both. A city needs both. You, you, we definitely, you need, you need the liquid in order to, to flow with cash flows, your property tax and your surface water, for example, have come in at two times a year. So you need that cash flow. There's going to be times where those funds are higher and there's going to be times where there's, they're lower as you get further away from, from that timeframe. So just that being a quick example of that sometimes there's some flow in that and at our lowest dip, that's the part of where my brain is. That's where we go to. Cause I'm very much so.
We should probably wrap up. We need to head up. Thank you. Thank you all for a great, great conversation. Thanks for the Lindsay Mayor and, and everybody. And we'll, we'll adjourn. We'll see upstairs.